Put a lot in it.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a meeting of Belbrook City Council. Today's date is September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. You can stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, could you call the roll?
Mr. Hope.
Here.
Mr. Havens.
Here.
Dr. Van Valtheisen.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mrs. Nadelstetter.
Here.
Mayor Schwalter.
Here.
Before you should have the minutes of our meetings of August the fourth and August the ninth. Does anyone have any corrections or changes to those minutes?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
None.
Seeing none, I declare the minutes approved as submitted. Tonight, we begin the announcements on a sad note. Belbrook's first city manager, David Hamilton, passed away September the third, twenty twenty-one. Dave was seventy-two years old. I want to share with you a little bit from his obituary, which appeared in yesterday's Dayton Daily News. Dave first worked in the city of Dayton, Office of Management and Budget, for five years. From nineteen seventy-seven until two thousand eight, Dave served as the city manager and finance director for the city of Belbrook. Dave was proud of making Belbrook a full-service city while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Over the years, he helped to bring over ten million dollars in grants to the city. The city elected Dave to the Wall of Honor in two thousand nine for his dedication and outstanding public service. His accomplishments included the establishment of the Belbrook Fire Department, expansion of the city water building, water system, and management of the city's growth. He also is responsible for actually remodeling and updating the city building to make chambers what they are today. In two thousand six, Dave was chosen City Manager of the Year. He collaborated with neighboring communities and served as a mentor for others in his field. In two thousand nine, the Ohio City Manager Association honored Dave for career achievement. On a personal note, Dave was my first contact with Belbrook. I was evaluating building a home on a cul-de-sac, and there was one remaining lot left, and everything else was already built up, and I was curious why the lot didn't sell. So on a whim, I called Dave Hamilton as city manager, thought he would know why my lot was not built on yet. And naturally, he knew all about the lot. He also knew the backstory for the lot, and it was my first home I built in Belbrook. Dave was very instrumental in me serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Board, and ultimately on City Council. He became a trusted advisor and mentor. I can only imagine what it was like to have been the first city manager. Belbrook achieved city status in nineteen seventy-four and was run by a very strong city council. Dave came onboard in nineteen seventy-seven. Dave was responsible for establishing many of our city practices and procedures still in place today. He was our first combination city manager, finance director, a position we still maintain. Dave managed the city during a period of rapid growth and expansion. He was well-liked by all. He was very slow to take credit for his accomplishments, but very quick to give credit to others. My thoughts and prayers go out to his wife Becky and the family. David Hamilton will be missed, but not forgotten. If you don't want counsel to like to come, but I would invite you to do so at this time.
I can't say, Mayor. I had the pleasure of having a couple-hour conversation with Dave, oh, probably about two, two-and-a-half months ago. He, even recently, his passion was very, very strong for the city.
Absolutely.
He helped me immensely in the conversation that we had, so he will be missed.
Thanks.
My husband and I have both served with David and hold him in very high regard. Quite a mind and a heart.
Absolutely. Again, our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife Becky and his son Aaron and his daughter Sarah.
I met Dave in nineteen eighty-three. I'd moved here, and my neighbors informed me if I was going to build a fence, I needed to get a permit. I came up to get the permit and filled out the paperwork and gave him the plans and, I think it was twenty-five dollars. To me, that was some money at that time. And I got done. I said, Dave, I got my fence done. Are you going to come down and look at it? He said, I may come down there sometime. Please come down and look at it. And he did. But no, he was such a nice person, and he did work hard. I remember the sewage out here. He worked hard on that, getting that fixed. That used to be a smell. It was a pumping station. And he worked hard and got that done. He really took care of the city, and he'll be missed.
Thanks, Forrest. Okay, well, again, our thoughts and prayers go out to Becky and his family. Next on the announcements, Constitution Week Proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated rule by law. Whereas September the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Michael W. Schwalter, Mayor of the City of Belbrook, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms grant guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Witness thereof, I will sign this and attach the city's seal. Thank you. Next up is the Kleinger's Group Streetscape Plan Update, and we have with us tonight Lynn Nishwitz. Rob, if you would introduce her.
Certainly. Lynn is the lead on conducting this study for the Kleinger's Group. And she has coordinated with efforts not only of city staff here, but also some outside organizations, as well as engineering. Our engineering contractor and firm. She's here to review the progress of the phases that have been accomplished thus far in the outlined study. And what we're about to embark on is those final stages, including a public forum and session for community input to start prioritizing some of these ideas. And I'll pass it off to Lynn and start taking it away.
Thank you very much, Rob. Again, thank you for having me here this evening. Again, my name's Lynn Nishwitz with the Kleinger's Group, and I'm leading the design for the downtown streetscape master plan. And as Rob mentioned, we're here today to talk about what we've done the past several months and then what the next steps are. If we could do the next slide, please. As a reminder, I wanted to mention the goals of what we were to do for the streetscape master plan because they are very important. You know, we are to preserve the character and history of the city, provide vibrant, welcoming public spaces that encourage community building, enhance the walkability and the ADA accessibility and the pedestrian connectivity in the downtown. We'd also like to provide for community branding and informational signage, integrate the Belrock Park into the streetscape area, adding, upgrading amenities such as streetlights and benches and trash receptacles and landscaping, and also increase the viability and the usage of the existing on-street parking. So those are a lot of the goals that we want to wrap into the streetscape master plan. So what we've done in the past several months are, we went ahead and got a base map started. You can go to the next slide, please. We went ahead and got a base map started. So we gathered available GIS information. And we also had our drone pilots fly the project area, which is great. I'm glad we have the drone capability because it ends up making the streetscape master plan document that you're going to have up to date and clear imagery for the base map. So the area that we're looking at for the streetscape that we're concentrating on is the area on the slide there in red. And that is Franklin Street and Main Street. And also, we have reviewed the comprehensive plan. We've also, to get the design and vision that you were looking for in that comprehensive plan, we've also reviewed LJB's sidewalk plan as well and got their transportation improvements that they'd like to see downtown as well. Then what we did is, our design team came independently. And we took a couple days and we really walked the downtown streetscape by ourselves. We wanted to take a look at it with our professional expertise of the thoughts that we had for the existing streetscape. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. And this is what the next couple slides are showing are, we're starting to put together the assessment that we're seeing for the existing streetscape. For example, I mentioned existing parking spaces. So we're starting to document where the existing parking spaces are. Are they marked? Are they unmarked? And then, you know, we'll go through the progression of when we do the proposed is where can we gain some additional parking and shall we mark them and all this kind of thing. So you can go to the next slide. Go to the next one, please. So now we're starting to look at, we've started to, like I said, after our site visits that the design team did, and we went ahead and started documenting the things that we saw along the streetscape, meaning what's the condition of the sidewalks? You know, where are the overhead power lines? What are the conditions of the street trees? What is the condition of the drainage? Basically, everything that rolls into the pedestrian experience and the vehicular experience along the streetscape. And then, after we started putting together our existing conditions, we came and met with, at that time, Melissa and Ryan, and we walked the streetscape with them. And we wanted to hear what their thoughts were of the existing conditions and the vision that they had for the proposed streetscape. So at that time, then, what we did is, again, we added more detail to the existing conditions. And then also, we started formulating the proposed improvements that we'd like to see along the streetscape. You can go to the next slide, please. You can go to the next one. Thank you. So now you're starting to see proposed improvements. And there is a lot here. There's a lot here to your streetscape. It's kind of why I'm doing a quick overview. But you'll start seeing on the proposed streetscape plans where we would like to see improved crosswalks and what those improved crosswalks might be. Maybe there's a mid-block crossing, you know, down by the dairy shed and the library and what that looks like. And where pedestrian lighting would be, where your benches would be, what type of pavement should be on the streetscape and those sorts of things. So it's basically grabbing all of the existing conditions, how to make everything better and more welcoming and, you know, inviting. And we know it's a historic downtown, kind of wrapping it all into one to come up with proposed ideas. So that's what we've been doing the past several months. And then meeting Rob and having several meetings about how we're going to move forward with the project. So you can go to the next slide, please. So then, we also have several sheets in the document that show design standards and imagery vision boards. This is leading us up to our public input meeting. So this imagery sheet shows ideas that we want to talk about with the public. You know, looking at, like I mentioned, the mid-block crosswalks. What does that look like? Looking at pavement types, what does that look like? What does your crosswalks enhancements look like? Perhaps there are sharos for bicycle, you know, riders that go through to make it more safe for them. So it's bringing up things and curb bump outs, you know, to increase parking and to shorten the distance to walk across the street. So there's a lot of imagery here that we want to talk through of what the vision, the proposed vision would be. And then if you go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So then, so that's where we are right now. We've compiled all the information, all the existing conditions. We've proposed quite a few improvements for the downtown streetscape, as well as vision and imagery boards. And then our next step is, on September twenty-ninth, we'd like to have a public input meeting. And at this public input meeting, it would be a public, open-house style meeting where we'll have all of our existing condition boards up, our proposed boards up, our imagery boards up, with the sole purpose of gaining comment, public comment, to get the public's thoughts and ideas of what they like, what they don't like, and any other comments that they have regarding the streetscape. So then, after that public input meeting, then we'll get back together with Rob and the city stakeholders, and we'll review, we'll review what happened at that public input meeting and what we gained for information. Then we'll finalize the streetscape master plan. So we'll finalize our proposed improvements. Then after we do that, we'll work again with Rob on a phasing strategy, as well as cost estimates that will go with the phases. So when we were hired to do the project, we learned that you guys wanted to do basically a three-year, and we can do it any way that you want to, but basically a three-year plan for phases and then a cost estimate for those three phases. And then, after we do that, so again, we'll have the cost estimates, the phasing strategy, and then we hope to wrap all of that up by early November. So it seems like a lot to do before November, but we've done a lot because we've gained all the information and we have a lot of ideas. And now it's just cementing in what the public and the stakeholders here to finalize the streetscape master plan. So with that, do you have any questions for me on where we are and where we're going?
Thank you, Lynn. That was a great overview. For counsel, I presume we're going to have an open session like we did for the comprehensive plan. I think we did that at the ski hill or the park district offices. We had a lot of tables and setup and a lot of tripod setup with clipboards on them, things like that. We'll find a location.
It takes a lot of room.
Something like that because there are probably maybe ten to fifteen people around each one of the boards, kind of looking at things and talking about it. Any questions of counsel for Lynn?
The only thing I have is utilities. Is that a, can that be an issue? I mean, you mentioned power lines being buried. We don't, some places, we don't have good drainage.
Those are all things that we've mentioned in the plan. You're right, there are overhead utilities. And even in the comp plan, you've mentioned over the long term, you'd like to put those underground, which is a long-term thing to do. So that could be a long-term plan. And then in regards to like the overhead utilities that you have right now, for instance, if we want to talk about street trees, we would look at proposing street trees that aren't going to grow into the power lines and those sorts of things, as well as not pull up your pavement either along the streetscape. And in regard to utility or drainage, yes, we are looking at drainage. And we noticed that you have some areas where you've got open drainage. That would look a lot better if you closed that up. You've got some, at the intersection there at Franklin and Main, you've got some water that, you know, it's an open channel there. It'd be nice to close that as well. So, yeah, we're looking at all of those types of things. All the, that's why there's a lot to it, the infrastructure, but also the aesthetics. So it's a combination of making sure that the infrastructure and the functionality looks good with the aesthetics.
I think anything with the utilities would be a big improvement.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, kind of all along those lines. Do you have any insight into the process of going about that? I mean, you call up AES and said, hey, can you bury our lines? Or is there sort of a rack and stack priority list that they get on, and you have to wait in line? Just is there anything you can share?
Well, I will say that I am not a transportation engineer, but we do have them on staff and we'll work with Dan Hoen at LJB moving forward in the process. But I imagine the first thing we would want to do is call the utility companies and start getting the conversation going of how do we get these buried? So definitely, and we can put those steps, we can coordinate with Dan and get those steps put into the documents so we know right what we're doing and can prioritize that. Maybe we prioritize that up in the phasing.
Okay. Yeah, I looked up, did some research on my own, and I saw a figure. I have no idea how accurate it is, but it said three million a mile.
It's extremely expensive.
Well, yeah, but there is some added cost of lower maintenance.
Until you have to fix it.
But it's expensive.
Well, and, you know, maybe you don't have it everywhere. Maybe we pick and choose areas. And then that's where we really focus of how we can, of how we can reduce these, you know, overhead lines. And, you know, same with the span wire poles that you have at the main intersection there, too, is, you know, turning those over to mast arms. That'll do a lot with aesthetics as well. So I'm glad you brought that up. It's an important thing, and I'll get back to you on that with the process steps.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question about the proposed, there are two areas on Franklin where you want to put a planting area in the middle of the street. To me, it doesn't look wide enough to actually accomplish that. And we've had some really negative experience with putting planting right at the street level.
Okay.
It, the garden club pushed for green space when we put all those bump outs in at the main intersection. And they just became trash pits.
Okay.
Trucks ran over them, the school buses ran over them, cars ran over them, salt killed everything that we tried to plant. And personally, I have a lot of trouble right now turning from these tiny side streets into the main line. And if there's more interference of turning, it just looks like it's really tightened up. I watched a semi the other day trying to turn from South Main onto East Franklin. And he made it most of the way around without running over the curb, but he didn't quite make it. And we have a lot of truck traffic because that's a state highway.
Okay.
So that's one of the concerns I had was the bump outs and those two planting things in the middle of the, in the middle of the streets.
Well, and this is great. This is the feedback that we want to hear to move forward with the plan because what you're seeing, nothing's set in stone.
Yeah.
That's why we wanted to hear, hear back from you guys and hear back from the public. You know, there's pros and cons with having planting in the middle of the street. You know, there's one school of thought where it helps slow down traffic. You know, you've got a lot of traffic going through there, creating more of a pedestrian environment. At the same time, it, you know, it does, could create an issue when you're turning and those sorts of things. And the right type of planting would have to be put in there to deal with the harsh conditions, but...
But it's the only east-west. I mean, some towns have alternate routes that you can do. We don't. And once you go past the first block on East Franklin, going east, if you want to turn around and come back, you've got to go through a private parking lot to turn around. There's no way to get back into town.
So I would say that the flow of heavy trucks is a topic for other discussion. I would still propose, you know, the design ideas of bump outs and medians. Let the public decide that. I mean, we can talk about different materials. I mean, I agree, harsh plants, hard to keep it going. But a comment that I just wanted to, I was going to mention later, but now it's been brought up. I happened to be in downtown Friday evening, and I saw a truck take the corner, and this was a fuel tanker. Take the corner, nearly hit the building I was in. And children were on the sidewalk and had to run to avoid to get hit by a truck. The issue of safety and practicality, trucks do not belong driving through there. And I think that's another issue that we have to address.
Well, it's a state highway, so I don't know what you can do about that.
We can control Main Street, not seven twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
They were coming up Main Street.
They're coming up Main Street. Tell them not to turn on seven twenty-five.
Or don't come up seven, Main Street.
That's another conversation.
Yeah, actually, I was very happy to see the medians in the plan. I am bothered by the speed of the cars that come through and the willingness to turn left anywhere and back up traffic through the intersection has quite often been a problem in the evenings. So I don't know how to accommodate planting. Maybe we don't need plants. I don't know. But I do like the idea of obstacles for large trucks turning left on or off of our Main Street. Franklin, I understand we can't control that. Did have two other questions for you. Streetlights. Love the picture of the street light. Didn't see any in the plan.
Yeah, and so the version that you guys got was a couple months ago. So we've been updating our plans since you have had that review that you had.
Okay.
So they are now in the plan.
And then the other question was, LJB input, was that significant, minor, or did that land?
So we're in ongoing conversations. I, it's, Dan called me today. I need to call him back and discuss it more. But we have reviewed their sidewalk master plan that they did. They did a sidewalk inventory along Franklin and Main Street. So we've reviewed all of that, and we've looked at that with our transportation engineers as well to make sure that we were on the same page with that. And we have incorporated that into the master plan.
So primarily sidewalks?
Primarily sidewalks.
Okay. Just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
So, and we'll continue the discussion with Dan, definitely.
Good.
I believe that's an intersection, some crosswalk input in their study, too.
Yeah, yeah, there's crosswalk enhancements. So, yeah, the streets, the whole streetscape, definitely. And what's interesting is, we came up with our assessment before we looked at LJB's plans, and a lot of it coincided with, you know, having the mast arms at the intersection and having the mid-block crosswalks, adding crosswalks, adding the ADA accessibility, the curb ramp, the bumpy strips there, yeah.
I guess, I just, in my perspective, I wouldn't want LJB to hinder your creativity or suggestions. So if there's, if it does come to that, maybe show us both perspectives. There's, you know, the streetscape that we want, really, we wanted to see, I think, your version of it more so than LJB's at this stage.
Oh, definitely. And how that worked is, like I said, we came up with our proposed thoughts and ideas. And actually, how it worked is, that's how we did it. We had our proposed thoughts and ideas. And then Melissa had given us the LJB sidewalk plan. So we just took a look at that, and a lot of it was in sync. But there was a lot that more that we did add to it, you know, with areas along the streetscape for sitting, you know, to rest, you know, to have a, you know, to eat your ice cream cone by the library and stuff like that, and to provide some curb bump outs. So it is different than the LJB plan and the median that you didn't like so well in the middle. So, yeah.
Thank you.
It is above and beyond. And with the median, it wouldn't have to have planting in it. It could have something that maybe is pavers and maybe there's, you know, light poles with some banners on it that is another way to brand the streetscape as you come through with light poles and banners.
Yeah, we thought the lanes come, we thought the bump outs were going to slow traffic downtown. And they put beds for planting, and within about two weeks, there were just major truck ruts in the mud. And then after that, it was dirt in the mud. It was, you know, trash in there, and muggles on the streets, all the curb. And we finally filled them in. It actually kind of reduced the bump outs a little bit, make intersectional bigger.
The school buses couldn't turn. It was ridiculous.
And that's important to double-check the turning radiuses for the big semi trucks and the fuel tankers and the school buses.
Yeah, the school buses have to come through town.
Is that something you do, is double-check the radiuses before you present it?
We have transportation engineers on staff, so we can check it. And definitely, once we move out of the master plan phase and do the construction document phase, oh, definitely, that's all double and triple-checked.
Good, good. Any more comments, questions?
Yeah, I think I was in your original proposal, you know, submitting to do the study. I saw a number of funding sources that you're, you know, versed in applying for, accessing what. And one of them, I wanted to just ask about Ohio Public Works Commission. Is this something that we could submit for those types of things? What's the process for getting in line for those funding sources?
Okay, so I'm glad that you brought that up, and we have a funding specialist onboard, which is great for these types of projects. And what we'll have in the master plan is we'll have a chapter dedicated towards grant funding. And we can help you with applying for those grants, free of charge. We'll just go ahead and do that. And we'll set kind of a timeline for those grants.
Okay. What's the kind of success rate that you see of these projects?
Success rates? It's been pretty successful, actually, on some of our projects.
Mostly at the state level, that we're funding usually comes from?
Multiple sources, yeah, from the state. I mean, we've got, well, there's been some regional funding that we've gotten recently in Silverton and in some areas south of town.
Okay.
So we'll lay all that out for you in a separate chapter so you can kind of see our ideas for that.
Okay, great.
So that's part of our next step. So that's part of our next steps.
We've also got a city manager who worked in funding sources too, so we're going to, uh, explain his background a little bit on that, so.
Yeah, OPWC is certainly something. We'll be using that for the seven twenty-five bridge, uh, coming up to cover the match. But the, um, the issue one money with, uh, uh, the safety element of it, which will, which will be good to address crosswalks. Uh, it can even address mast arm installation, uh, you know, from a safety perspective for sight lines, viewability, turning radiuses, expansion, and then there's the SDP funds for the actual, um, uh, surface paving, uh, that we can, you know, incorporate and design into. So pedestrian safety is, is big and there's, there's certainly a lot of, a lot of opportunity for, for sidewalk money through some of the, the state funding, which is federal funding passed down through MVRPC. So, um, we, um, will certainly have, uh, have projects in line for their committee consideration for, uh, for several cycles to come.
Very good. Any more comments or questions for Lynn?
I just have a quick question on, uh, it's Franklin and Main is the main streets. Is there an issue with tying the other streets into this new, new street? Like you have East Street right here. Do you have to do anything when you lead into those streets? You have alleys coming into them. Is, is there any issues there with maintaining that flow?
So we would have to take a look at that. Um, currently, we've just pretty much been keeping in the confines of that kind of the red box we showed with Franklin and Main Street. So we can take a look at the alleys that come in and, and, and the standards for that.
Because of the way the city's set up, you come down the main streets, you go off, you access other smaller streets to get the businesses, post office, groceries. People's, you know, go to their homes, sometimes through alleys. Alleys are used a lot. There's even businesses on alleys. I was just curious if that was an issue with respect to, you know, when you, you've got a new road, does it flow into the existing?
How it, how it flows in?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would say, we'll take a look at it, but I would say that the standards that we create on Franklin and Main, you know, they would still creep out into, you know, the rest of the downtown district and those alleyways and so forth that you're talking about.
Because it's still kind of used the way it was back in eighteen forty-four. A lot of the, you know, the narrow streets and stuff like that.
Okay.
You're a good point.
Yeah. And, you know, the buildings are right on us, built right on the street for a purpose back then. I don't know if that's going to be an issue. You have room for road, sidewalk, that type of thing. Not sure you'll work it out.
So we'll work it out and looking forward to the public comment as well, so. And once you see the plans in more detail and, and we can talk about some of those areas.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anything else?
I would just. I, I would just say regarding the, uh, the meeting on the twenty-ninth of this month, uh, we still are working out a location. We hope to have that wrapped up this week. Um, you know, we offered up this, this facility if Lynn thinks that, uh, this should be large enough. Uh, but as, uh, the, the mayor and others have mentioned, the, the previous comp plan, this may not have been big enough to accommodate what, what was there. So, um, we may see about availability of the same space or some other locations.
Would we want to get word out in media too about wanting public comment? I mean,
Absolutely.
Not just a traditional through, from our website or our Facebook page, but daily.
Absolutely. We, we certainly would. And, and, you know, the key thing about this is this, you know, Kleinger's is facilitating this, you know, on, on behalf. So this isn't, you know, the, the city running a meeting, a council meeting or something. This is truly a, you know, designed to be a, you know, very comfortable, uh, intimate, uh, you know, engaging type of experience that, without the formality of a, of a governmentally structured meeting certainly. So, uh, we want to make sure to have it in a location that's accessible, uh, that is, is conducive to, you know, facilitating thought and work groups and breakouts and things like that. So, um, sometimes a more neutral site is better for that. And to your point, yeah, we, we want to certainly use all sources to get the word out. And hopefully that even if we pick a big place, it still may not be big enough. You know, you hope you have that much engagement and input.
Absolutely.
So we'll work on the location and, and lock that in hopefully by this week and we can start, give us two solid weeks of, uh, getting the word out and promoting it.
Coming up quick.
Well, since this process started, we've had a lot of people from township, a lot, more than, more than, uh, more than just the public here in Belbrook. So it's, uh, you have a lot of people.
It's of interest, absolutely.
Lot of interest.
Okay, Lynn, thanks so much for meeting with us tonight. We look forward to our next meetings with you and hearing more about the streetscape. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Moving on tonight, we have no public hearings, but we do have an introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight. Dr. David Van Beldheisen, please.
All right, Mayor. City of Belbrook, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eight. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-one dash four by making supplemental appropriations to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for twenty twenty-one. Whereas the city of Belbrook adopted the twenty twenty-one annual budget based on the best information available at the time. And whereas additional costs and/or adjustments will occur in various twenty twenty-one personnel services and other expenses, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains, section one, that the twenty twenty-one appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. And there is a table I'll come back to. Section two, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that any and all deliberations of this council that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including, but not limited to, section one twenty-one dash two-two, or excuse me, dot two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. And section three, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. And I know, Mayor, you might be sad that I will not go through each and every one of the impressive list of figures there. Um, I will say I noticed our city manager had a sheet detailing, um, I'm quite glad, Rob. I looked at it and mental math, I said that's about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total. And it looks like five fifty-three was the number. So, um, rather than me yap on, um, it looks like you've got some stuff already laid out. You wish to tell us for why the amendments, the supplements were being suggested?
Sure can.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, as, uh, as noted, I, we, we created a gen item information sheet and we'll, we'll use this as a standard piece of, uh, of, of document and information uh, for all the gen items, especially involving legislation to kind of capture highlighted information specifically to what the fiscal impact of, of, you know, the, the, the piece of legislation, the project, whoever it might be, uh, some purpose and some background and, uh, any, any other mention that, uh, that's pertinent. So on that, we kind of detailed, um, this particular supplemental, um, comes to us after a couple of main things. Primarily, uh, there is receipt of some, uh, grant funding. I mentioned the seven twenty-five project earlier. Uh, we also mentioned the Kleinger's, uh, study, uh, that's, that's ongoing. Since we've received the funds for that through the county development grant and also, uh, the, the state funding up and coming, uh, and as well as the ARPA money, uh, we want to make sure to get that appropriated into the budget so that the relative expenditures can come from it. In addition, we've also had some donations. We've also had a couple of projects come up. And we are wrapping up some additional, uh, capital projects that were desired, uh, and approved. And, uh, now as the year has come out through the, the first half, uh, we're just simply making some amendment, amended appropriations, uh, to accommodate those. So just running through them very briefly, the first, uh, main part through the, uh, through the general fund. Uh, we mentioned thirty-five thousand for the Kleinger's group, uh, downtown street state, streetscape study. Of course, seventy-five percent of which is covered in grant revenue. We've experienced, uh, an increase in some legal fees this year, uh, to date, um, with the, um, with the Purdue Pharma, uh, as well as, uh, some previous code enforcement, um, litigation that had, that had gone on. In addition, the prosecution fees for the increase in the contract, that's a flat fee, uh, but that covers that. And also we have some extended costs for, uh, some software conversion. As you recall, uh, the city switched to a new finance software system. On top of that, there has been some additional peripherals and some additional IT support outside of the original IT contract uh, that has caused, um, uh, a, a little bit of extended, uh, fees that were anticipated, but just were waiting to see what some of those final costs were to true up the appropriation. Also within the general fund, uh, the museum department, uh, is likely to receive a grant, um, to make replayer and replacement of steps. In addition, we've looked at the building and, uh, the funeral, uh, portion of the museum. It has some software work and some, um, some physical work that needs to be done. And I want to make sure to get, uh, the, uh, the funds available to make those repairs before twenty-five hundred dollars turns into, you know, ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars, especially involving soffits and varmints getting in. We, we certainly want to preserve that building and, and the great artifacts within it. Uh, the police fund has received a donation from Ed McKeiter's, uh, estate. In addition, there was a one thousand dollar cash donation, uh, that came in as well. And, uh, along with that, their share of the, um, IT related expenses, eleven thousand five hundred. Uh, the street fund engineering costs for a seven twenty-five bridge, uh, which potentially will start next year. It'll be next, um, budget year for the state, which would be, um, you know, mid-year in twenty twenty-two, which would technically be a twenty-three fiscal for the state. So if you see twenty twenty-three, it would actually start the beginning, which is mid-twenty twenty-two. So we'll, we'll get to that as we, uh, as we firm up some more, um, some more timelines on that particular project. And we'll give an update on that specifically here upcoming soon. An additional eighteen thousand four hundred dollars is needed to schedule and continue those projects. The right-of-way, um, acquisition for the bridge work has to be done as the next stage in order for us to stay on target. Again, the majority of these funds will be coming back in the form of the, um, the, um, the funds from MVRPC. And once we get the result of our OPWC application for the, um, uh, the matching funds, once, and we feel pretty confident that we'll have some success, maybe not a hundred percent, but a lot of success in those matching funds. Once those will come in, well, then obviously that will offset this. Uh, but we have to go ahead and appropriate it because we're going to begin that process and spend that money now.
A quick question on that. Um, does your likelihood or, or success score raise if you coordinate with other jurisdictions such as surrounding township, parks?
I, yeah, I think it does, um, especially in, in cases such as, um, um, thoroughfare and transportation projects and, uh, OPWC, the safety, the, um, I think it's called the Fast Money Act that's, uh, that's coming through, the applications are due actually in October. We're going to be submitting, uh, for several and things such as Little Shore Creek Road and all those things. So whenever there's a multi, you know, the county, the park district, the city, the township, the more parties and skin in the game, the higher the, um, the, the rating and the, uh, the favorability for award is on a lot of those. So we always try to, we will always try to coordinate and have a regional application. For the, for the bridge, it's, it's pretty much within the city. But again, it was a project that ODOT took on. They're going to manage, uh, the, the construction uh, and the project management of it, which vastly reduced the city's costs, uh, of that particular match. So, um, we did good with that. Uh, the capital improvement fund, um, for purchase and installation of programming and video equipment and peripherals, peripherals for the broadcast TV. I think we're close. I know we've got the, um, uh, the equipment in and I know that, um, Spectrum has been in and out and snooping around a, a few different places for locations. So, um, I, I think, I think we're close on that. And, uh, there's some additional for the actual costs of originally budgeted capital items. So, uh, you know, dealing with estimates at the beginning of a budget, now that we, uh, get into what those actual, uh, costs will be, that will, uh, that will appropriate and, and make good and balance those. Coronavirus relief funds, there's eighteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars that was not appropriated, but is available still in the fund. So we want to appropriate that and go ahead and finalize any, any, any final supplies and applications relevant to that level of funding. Then we have the local fiscal recovery fund. Uh, that's what it was named, uh, when the fund was developed. But this will, uh, receive the American Rescue Plan Act monies or the ARPA monies, where the, the city is due to receive, uh, in total, um, I think it's three, three seventy-eight, I believe. Um, that is the original allotment. We will get another allotment of that later on in the year. We will have a pretty detailed discussion and develop a plan for programming of the use of this money. It's different than the coronavirus money, uh, much different. This is money that can be used and sustained up through twenty twenty-five. So the purpose of it is, is to actually establish programs that help incentivize and continue the recovery of the localized economy to make sure to allow for things such as housing, small business assistance, transportation, and of course also, uh, healthy communities regarding, uh, continued pandemic fighting, et cetera. So we will develop, um, a, a master plan, for lack of better terms, to identify what those priorities and needs are and begin to use these funds. But the first step is, um, since the monies were received, I don't like to just let them sit there. We need to go ahead and get them appropriated, make sure that our, uh, our budgeting and our available fundings are transparent to the community so that they, they know what resources we have, so we can begin getting input and making plans for it. You can see we've divided it up. Of course, we can come back and change it. We just split it up so far, twenty-five percent for personnel service use. Part of the monies, the, a big part of it is still recover some of the lost, uh, revenue and lost expense in personnel services. They, that would also include personnel services to actually initiate, monitor and manage any new program or planning for use of this money. If we, for instance, utilize something for small business assistance in the downtown region, obviously there's going to be personnel resources to manage that and get things going. So we'll be able to, uh, to do that, uh, as we move forward, um, and, and make good use of, of those funds. So that's that. Uh, the last table there is a brief breakdown to show what the original budget was. We've had already two previous supplementals. Um, the, the city, of course, as you recall, at the beginning of the year, did not implement a CIP, waiting to see the effects of coming out of twenty twenty would happen. Luckily, there were some opportunities and some staple funding provided and you implemented the CIP. Uh, the amended budget here leaves us with, uh, some changes in revenue, uh, of course, some changes in expenses. And, um, then we've, we've kind of absorbed thus far, uh, that original difference from the original budget. But as I said, uh, once we finalize and get notice of the OPWC money and also, uh, get our actuals versus our estimates in, in our revenues and expenses after the closeout of the year, uh, we will be able to, uh, to provide a, a more accurate reflection. Uh, but budget is, is healthy and stable. Uh, there are more than adequate funds available in our, in our, in our fund, or not our fund reserves, but our fund balances, uh, to accommodate this, these supplementals. Uh, and we still have a legally balanced budget. And, um, we certainly ask council to, uh, consider, um, recommending and adopting this ordinance so that we can move forward with the stated projects, uh, that I described here tonight.
Any questions of council on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight? Rob, thanks for the detailed, uh, analysis of it. It's something that we need to do. And again, this is a periodic thing, kind of a house cleaning type thing to make sure you don't overspend our balances and, uh, very critical to have these in place when the auditors come around. There's no more discussion. Can I have a motion regarding ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Dr. Van Beldheisen to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight and ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-one dash four by making supplemental appropriations to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for twenty twenty-one. This was segmented by Mr. Hope. Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Spallock?
Yes. Thank you, Pam. Last, our introductions, uh, of ordinance this time, we do have resolution, resolution twenty twenty-one dash BB. Councilman Havens.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash BB. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to be, to the county auditor. Whereas this council, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas Budget Commission of Green County, Ohio, has certifies, certified its actions thereon. thereon, this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without, and what part within the 10 mil tax limitation. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in its certification be, and the same are hereby Section 2, that there be and is hereby lev, levied on the tax duplicate of said city, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as attached here too. Section 3, that the clerk of this council be, and she is hereby directed to certify a copy of the resolution to the county auditor of said county. Section 4, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of the city council relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including 121.22 of the Revised Code of the State of Ohio. Section 5, that this resolution take, shall take effect and be in force forthwith.
Thank, thank you, Ernie.
All right, thank you. The, as indicated within the, the language, and as you can tell, it's very specific language as required by, by the county auditor for, for this particular certificate and resolution. The purpose of it is, is that we need to pass a resolution accepting the rates and official certificate of our estimated resources by October 1 of each year. What that does is that allows the county to certify, to provide us that estimate, and for us to certify that certified estimate, to begin building our budget for 2022. So this basically tells us that this is the money that we can use as our estimate of resources available to begin building that budget. It includes, as you can see on the table, attached the estimated unencumbered or care over balance added to what the year's new revenue would be, providing that total. And we certainly ask that this is considered and passed this evening so that we can meet the needs of the auditor, and we can start utilizing that certificate of estimated resources to begin our 2022 budget process.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions of council on Resolution 2021-BB?
Well, as a new council member, I always wondered how this process worked out, so now I know.
We do it every year.
We're at square one.
This is the end of it. You had a public hearing earlier and for the original creation of the tax budget and all that's done, and, and then we actually have to file our amended, any amendments by January 1 of 2022. So we'll have our, we should, we should have our budget adopted prior to then, and that'll be our final step, and we're off to the races.
Again.
Again.
Yeah. Thanks, Rob. Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 2021-BB? Ernie, can we have a motion, please?
I shall move, Mayor.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Elaine.
A motion was made by Mr. Hayden to adopt Resolution 2021-BB, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Spohl?
Yes. Thank you, Pam. Do we have any old business for this evening? Moving on to new business, we do have an Ohio Division of Liquor Control notice with regards to an application for change of corporate stock ownership for DOT's Belbrook Market. Rob, can you use a little background on what this is? Looks like just a name change to reference the new owner.
That is correct. The business itself has, has switched hands. I believe the real estate is still owned by the original. However, the business itself, and that is required as the business that's going to be selling the, the liquor and beer, they are the ones that are required to hold the license. So this should be a transfer to that name. Our review of any concerns from either side of any services within service, safety, or legal, find no issues at all, and would support and recommend council pass a motion to, to not object to this transfer.
Okay. Any questions to council?
Just real quick, make sure I understood you, Rob. Essentially, what you're saying, the original owner has sold it, the business. I heard, I heard you specify business is separate. So DOT's Market is now owned by someone else. As such, that transfer requires a, our approval for that transfer of the liquor license?
Yes, actually, what, what we would be doing is agreeing not to oppose the transfer, if, if that makes sense. So we actually don't issue or authorize it. We just have an opportunity to oppose it, and then the state would decide if they would schedule a hearing to hear the opposition to make a determination.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion to not oppose the transfer of liquor license for DOT's Market?
I'll move.
Thank you, Elaine, and a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Yeah, we've had these from time to time. I don't think we've had formal motions, but if preferred a formal motion, they'd just say we don't object to it, but that's fine.
A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to not oppose the transfer of ownership of the liquor license for DOT's Belbrook Market, and was seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
I'll recuse myself from this.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
And Mayor Spohl?
Yes. Thanks, Pam. Moving on, city manager report.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First off, I was going to talk about the fire survey, and I think there's no, nobody better suited to talk about some of the efforts that the fire department does regarding to some community engagement and input and feedback as to the services they're providing than the fire chief. So I yield to, to Chief bizarre, please. Excuse me. Well, thank you, Mayor, council, city manager, for allowing me to come here tonight and do one of the things that I enjoy doing best, and that's talking about our fire department and the great things that they do. I know some of you may be aware that we send out a survey on every incident that is generated on the fire service, whether that be an EMS call for picking up somebody off the ground for bumps and scrapes, or to somebody that has taken a more significant incident, needs our care, along with the fireside. And, and with those surveys, we get them back once a month. They send out and they come back. Right now, we got about a 30% return on our surveys coming back to us. And with those surveys, there is seven questions that we ask, ranging from the courtesy of our 911 operator that, that they talk to at Green Central. That'll be their first line of communication, asking for help. And so we talk to them, how their communication with Green Central was. And again, this is rated on a one to five schedule or scale, one being the lowest and five being the highest. Then we ask how our fire department's personnel efficiency was. How quick did they get there? Did it meet your standards? How was their professionalism? They come in and portray themselves in a professional manner that we expect, along with the courteousness of the firefighters? And one of the things that may sound silly and on a fire emergency is how, how well did they do keeping your, your home clean and not damaged? That is important to us, very much so, as that only helps the citizens get back to a more normal state after the emergency. We also ask our citizens on the reasons, if the reasons of the actions were explained to them very, well, if they understood what was going on, whether it be an emergency call, explaining why we're putting a heart monitor on a patient, or why, for instance, a fire call that they had to tear out a section of your wall to make sure there was no fire extension. We want to make sure that all of that is explained to the citizens, so when they come back into their house or get to the hospital, there's no surprises as to what all they did and why they did that. But, and then the last thing we do is we ask them their overall satisfaction with our fire department. And like I said, we send these surveys out for every incident we, we create throughout the fire department. And basically, out of that 25, 27% that we have back right now, 92% of the people rate number one as a five. 91% of the surveys that come back rate, I'm sorry, 91% rate number two as a five, how efficient our personnel were. 90% rate the third question, our professionalism, as a number five. Our courteousness, that is also a 90% at number five. And then to be able to explain the damage and why we did what we did, there's a 93% that rated that as a five. And then the actions of what they did, that's a 91% that rated it a five. And then lastly, our overall experience that they encountered with our, our members, that is a 94% at number five. Out of these 25, 27% surveys we have, I only have one that was a number two. The rest were three and up. By my standards, anybody that reports a three or less, I follow that up with a phone call to make sure I understand why that was a three or less. A lot of times, it can be just a communication error, or as the number two that we had here, that might have been an issue that they were meeting friends with the police department, and we had to go in and, and they requested a medic before they were taken somewhere else. So they were obviously not happy with our services, as we told them that there's no reason for them to go to the hospital instead of going where they were going to head to next. So along with these surveys also, as you will see your annual reports that will be coming out here at the beginning of the year, and as past annual reports we do, several of the comments that come back from the surveys, I like to publicize those in that annual report. So you'll see those at the bottom of the line, so that you can see what, what the community's saying about our fire department. One of the other things that I enjoy doing, and I did this with the, the previous city manager, is once these come in, about once a month, I will email a stack to the city manager, and I also send it out to our troops. They really enjoy reading the feedback. It validates what we're doing, and it gives them a sense of reason why we take the extra measures to help grandma or grandpa, or move a chair back after we had to remove the recliner so we can get our equipment in, and then get our equipment out. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and, and explain a little bit about the fire department and a validation place, or a validation tool that we have in place to make sure our fire department's doing top-notch service, and I'm proud to report that we are. So at any time, if there's ever any questions or comments or concerns about the fire department, please don't hesitate to call the office at any time. I'd love to talk to anybody about it, good, bad, or indifferent. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gee, thanks for the good report. You can keep up the good work.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Any questions or comments of council?
Thanks, Chief.
Absolutely.
And just if, if I can, I'm somewhat amused. You said the individual who is getting to spend some time with the police actually filled out and returned the survey.
Yes, yes. They did. Surprisingly, we get quite a few of those, but this one wasn't in our favor this time, unfortunately.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah. Anybody else? Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I just have a couple more quick things on the same line, and I see my last page. I think I cut it off and didn't include it, and I apologize, just, just a couple other one-liners. But I just wanted to also make sure to note that some more recognition of three of our employees, Michaela, Jerry, and Ryan down at service, and the commendable work that they did. This gentleman that left this email, you know, was very passionate about it, and it took time to make sure in detail how satisfied that, that they were with the services that they provided, and not only what the chief said, but pretty much that 90-plus rating, I think, would go across the board for just about any department and any level employee here that we have in the city. The, the level of service and the, the limited amount of people that we have providing the service, I think, would shock a lot of our residents because of the, the quality of the service that is being provided. Seems as if there's much more quantity behind it, and that's just reflective of the caliber and the quality of, of people that we have. Speaking of that and personnel, what would have been on the, and again, I apologize, I I cut it off, it looks like. We have the announcement for the Planning and Zoning Administrator out. The cutoff for applications for that would be the 24th of this month, so hopefully when we get those applications in, we will be able to finalize the process and make a selection and bring a new, new member to staff that will be focused on a lot of the planning elements that we just heard tonight and in the future, but also structuring and I guess, maybe standardizing would be the right word, some elements of the zoning code, taking out and looking at some of the property maintenance concerns, some of the ambiguity and the enforcement process, but focus on compliance and focus on making sure that we incorporate some modernized standards and, and help out areas of the community that, that need that with focus on compliance. So that'll be a, a high charge for that next person, and I think that they have a lot of opportunities for a lot of engagement and reshaping this next chapter of Belbrook with, with some new streetscapes, with some new planning, with some new opportunities. So it's, it's a great time. And the, the final thing would be, we are engaging and having more discussions, and we'll be bringing hopefully into next year a, for lack of better terms, an informal study. Drainage, stormwater runoff is of high concern, obviously, in the community and a variety of areas. And we have addressed a couple of targeted issues and areas already in terms of identifying what the problem is, but having, A, funding and B, resources to be able to maintain and address some of these continuous ongoing drainage swales, culverts, erosion, et cetera. It's something that we don't want to fall too much further behind on, and we want to work with our available resources to identify what some plans of action can be regarding that. Obviously, we've got the big-ticket ones, but we also have just, just about every neighborhood. I just was up looking at one off of right at the corner of Big Tree just the other day. You've got a 15-inch pipe that's about a four-inch pipe now, you know? So, you know, we need to make sure to have availability for the system to be working, and that takes regular maintenance and upkeep, and, you know, creating a system to be able to incorporate that. So we want to kind of inventory it all, take a look at what some of the needs are, and just buy some maintenance. I think that we can make some improvements of what there is in existence already, let alone seeing what needs to be added to it. So we'll start with our baseline, find out what that is, and move forward from there. But we hear concerns, we've seen a lot of concerns. Certainly, one of the things that I recognize coming in seemed like a lot of the issues revolve around some form of, of drainage of some form, and, and a lot of quality life and, and property maintenance concerns around that. So we'll, we'll identify some of the sources and start, start addressing it.
You know, very good, Rob. It's kind of funny because the last couple of years, we've had these 100-year storms happening at least two or three times, and not so infrequent anymore. So it's important that we look at this stormwater runoff and the problems it causes.
I wonder when that clock resets and it doesn't become a 100-year storm anymore. That's all I'd have for the update tonight, Mayor Council.
Any questions, city manager?
Just one, Rob. On, at one time, city manager had a summer program with lots of smaller-type jobs that they contracted. There was a chunk of money, and they would take that and lay out, like you're talking about culverts and things like that.
Like some seasonal work and things?
And they would, you know, it would, it would last probably three months, and they would go do all these different jobs. Service departments are pretty much, you know, they, they're busy.
Yes.
And is that something that we could possibly?
Absolutely. I think it's a, it's a great idea, and, you know, to bring in just some seasonal workers for some just general maintenance, and a lot of it has to do with, you know, cutting down growth and managing stuff like that, digging out some of the pipes and culverts. Yeah, absolutely. That, that is a, a great use of a, a summer work program, and, you know, getting some work done needs to be done.
Yeah.
So along those lines, I had always thought if there could be some coordination between the school district and the city, where the students actually come and work, things like that, and the money can get funneled to the school district, and they log community service hours.
Yeah, I, I think-
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I don't know how big it is, but...
Yeah, we certainly would have to check to make sure, I'm certain, we'd need to make sure that the students would be of the right age and all those things and liability, but yeah, I think like a summer work program and intern credits for community service could be cut, even college-age students, you know, could, you know, could take advantage of something like that. But yeah, I think that coming up with ways to fill the need, you know, some kids need to work and learn the value of that and contribute, and we've got some projects that need done, so.
I know a lot of the students have like participation fees in sports, or band, or any other extracurricular activities.
That'd help offset it.
Yeah. It's a win for both parties.
Well, now's the time to start looking at that stuff and developing something into next summer, so we'll start some planning and some thinking.
We have a discussion with the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Parks as well, I know they hire summer help.
Sure, yeah.
That might be, they might have some insight for you there.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Parks are all about summer help generally.
Yeah.
Good idea, thank you.
If I may, Mayor, one quick question, Rob, you mentioned that the litigation costs a while back had gone up, you mentioned Purdue Pharma, and I don't remember anything in council about that, is that just, is the city part of that class action lawsuit?
Yeah, it was just something, yeah, we are, and based on, you know, that took some legal work, that was just one of the bills that is outside of the norm, but, you know, when the attorney did most of the work and had to, you know, come up with the resolution and stuff, and again, as you recall, that will be dependent on the amount of participation of the other communities. I still don't know what level of participation that is, we haven't, they haven't come out with, you know, their results on that yet, so we're hoping for more than less, because then the award is greater, so.
I believe you were out of town when we...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I believe, yeah.
Judges is why we adopted that, to be representative.
Yeah, it wasn't very, we had to do it as a special emergency because of the timing.
Right.
Yes, yes, it was very short timeframe, so we should actually, I believe, I believe the end of October, I believe, was a benchmark time for that, and once the award comes in, it'll more than offset the legal cost involved in it, and then we'll be able to implement any other funds into...
Super, thank you.
Some of the stuff, so.
Any other questions, Rob? Good report, city manager. Committee reports, service.
Thank you, Mayor. Salt barn's full, we're ready for winter, equipment's ready. One of the things the service department does is, as a resident, if you have a lot of water usage in form of irrigation, swimming pools, wash your car a lot, you can have a meter installed, the city's cost is around four hundred dollars for the meter, you can have that installed, and what that does is you don't have to pay the sewage costs on the water that you use. So, that's something to think about. I know swimming pools are real popular, are getting more popular, and you may not save enough to pay for it the first year, but, you know, over long-term, you probably save some money. I just brought that up, because it is a, it is a, could be a money savings, and the four hundred dollars would be for the meter, and then any plumbing cost would be on the resident. There's two ways of doing it, there's an irrigation meter which has to have a backflow preventer installed, and then there's one that you can have installed that goes to an outside spigot, that would be good for something like swimming pool, irrigating, or like watering your garden with, using a garden hose basically, or a hot tub filling that. So, that's just something to consider, maybe if you have plans over the winter, maybe next year, building a pool or setting a hot tub or anything like that. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Forrest.
Safety.
Yep, I just wanted to briefly summarize, I believe it was August eighteenth, I don't have the date written down, that we toured Green County Central Dispatch. The tour was very informative, but also contained a considerable amount of discussion at a critical level to understand the many factors that go into operating, sustaining, and funding that continued service. So, I'm looking forward to further discussions and figuring out what the correct path is forward on that. But I also want to commend the service, the skill level, the people who are manning that facility around the clock, it was truly eye-opening to see the amount of information that is constantly coming into that facility, and just how safety services are dispatched across the entire county, so kudos to them. I also wanted to mention that fire department continues to monitor COVID and address safety risks as required. Happy to report that on Labor Day, the MDA, the Fill the Boot for MDA raised five thousand dollars, so well done. And this is kind of tied into fire, kind of community, but I wanted to go ahead and mention it now with regard to Brooks Mill Ten K, it went off wonderfully as a participant of it, I just want to comment, if I had an opportunity to fill out a survey for fire at about mile five, I saw Chief Bizarro and asked for a ride, and he laughed.
Good on you, chief.
That's it, that's all I got, thank you.
Thanks, TJ. Finance and audit, Dr. Dave, anything to add tonight?
Well, I'll just say that I couldn't help but notice that of the next six meetings, five have budget stuff related to them. So, I assume that you, I, the city manager, and others with the work sessions and so on, will be deep in the budget for the rest of the year, since it's that time of the season.
Yeah, we will be, we've really pushed to get the budget in place by December thirty-first. A lot of times, it was adopted as a, an emergency ordinance, our last meeting in December, but we've really put some more thought in, I think the process is good, but it does take some time. Anything else, Dr. Dave?
Not that I know of from there, sir.
Ernie, anything on finance, or?
Nothing on finance.
Okay. Elaine, community affairs?
Okay, we finally have a recommendation for appointments to two of our boards that have had empty positions for a few months. The Community Affairs Committee interviewed for the BVA Property Review Commission, and are recommending Kyle Bamer, is that right, Kyle Bamer? Boomer, sorry, Kyle. Kyle Boomer for that position, which our recommendation then is a motion.
I will second the motion.
A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to recommend, to appoint Kyle Boomer to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Property Review Commission, and this was seconded by Mayor Schwalter. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Belltheisen?
Yes.
Yes.
And the second recommendation is for the Village Review Board, and we have proposed Lakeisha Taylor for that position. I need it. Yeah, it's our motion.
I will second that one as well.
A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to appoint Lakeisha Taylor to the Village Review Board, and this was seconded by Mayor Schwalter. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Belltheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Do you think so, Elaine?
And that's it for...
Boards are all at full capacity right now?
The boards are at full capacity right now, I don't know that we've had any applicants for the records. That was posted, I don't know where that stands right now.
Okay, thanks. Pam, clerk's update?
So, there were no agenda items for the Planning Board meetings that had been scheduled for this Thursday, September sixteenth has been canceled. And then, our upcoming meetings that we have no coming up, October eleventh, we'll start with a six p.m. budget work session for Administration and Service Department, October twenty-fifth, a six p.m. budget work session for Police and Fire Departments, November eighth is a six p.m. budget work session on the Capital Improvement Plan, and then November and December, we'll have the introduction of the budget ordinance and then the public hearing.
Okay. Thanks, Pam, any questions of her updates? A lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah.
This brings us to open discussion of council. Forrest, anything else to bring before us tonight?
Just a comment, on April twelfth, twenty-seventeen, we had a walkability study, community workshop in this room, we had lots, we had a lot of participation, Bel Brook Citizens Township, that was kind of the first thing that we started this process of making downtown more viable, and we're on the third city manager involved in this process, started out with Mark Slawkack, Melissa Dodd, and now Mr. Shomar, and just to show that council is moving forward, and we're on the path to try to accomplish this, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Forrest. Ernie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things, Kyle and Lakeisha, thank you for joining the team, we look forward to working with you and appreciate your support. I did want to mention both the city manager and the businesses in the community, to prepare them for the weekend of September twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we'll have approximately twenty to thirty thousand people show up that weekend in Bel Brook for the Ohio Fusion Classic, Bel Brook Soccer Association puts that on. It's a great opportunity to have a couple extra employees at your business to be able to make sandwiches quick enough and maybe make a little bit more money. There's been many years in the past where the businesses didn't know this was coming, and the visitors were kind of shocked at how difficult it was to get a sandwich in town. Might even be a great opportunity for a fundraiser of a local organization that might want to set up a tent and cook hot dogs or something, just putting that out there, Bel Brook Soccer Association would probably love some participation like that. And then, I definitely want to thank Chief Bizarro for supporting a back-to-school, fresh-start activity that I was also part of this past month, not only did they, this group of businesses want to get school supplies in the hands of the kids that needed it, but they also wanted to give them a haircut, free haircut, and I believe there were well over fifty haircuts in addition to school supplies handed out. I talked to Chief Bizarro, he said it was well-attended, he opened the firehouse up to give out the school supplies, that was a great opportunity for community engagement too, so appreciate that support, chief. And that's it.
Thank you, Ernie. TJ?
No additional comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Elaine?
Nothing more.
Dr. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, just one question, question suggestion to put forth, I noticed with, or I guess recently noticed the flurry of public records requests, and as I was filling those, just thinking as more people come on in city staff, public records coming in, the fact that as you are on council or working for the city, that is an Ohio public record, I wondered if the city manager could look into the cost of the email services currently being provided, I know that we have city of Bel Brook addresses, but my thought was the Planning Board, the Village Review Board, the other boards that serve the city are also doing business, and IT discipline, state-of-the-art, seems to be having dedicated email for those businesses. The mixing of, you know, city and personal accounts can get messy, so I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion to see what the cost is first, see if it's a significant barrier, and then go from there.
Good idea, I like that. Pause this here once. Thanks, Dave, anything else? Tonight's one thing, Chief Bizarro, for sure, the results of the survey, obviously, they're always going to be good results when they share them, I find that people don't tend to share results that aren't so good, but I appreciate yours, and it looks like they were very heavily weighted toward the five, and I think that's a great rating. Also, I had the chance to speak with the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Optimists Club on September the first at their dinner meeting, of which Louie's a member, one of the things they do is they have no flags, and if you haven't already participated, and I would encourage you to contact them and participate in the program, they get like fifty or sixty dollars a year, but they make sure you have a flag in front of your house for all the federal holidays, and it'd be nice to see more and more flags in Bel Brook. That's all I have for tonight, at this point in time, we're open to public comment, does anyone from the audience care to address council tonight?
I'm Louis Schottberg, I live at forty-two ninety-three Alex Trail Sugar Creek Township. I did live in the city for twenty years and just moved out. I was saddened to hear that Dave passed away. Dave Hamilton was very instrumental in me obtaining this job that I have today as cameraman, and I feel it's a great privilege to David Hamilton to encourage me to do this job, and it's been a great job that I've enjoyed the whole time I've done it. A friend of mine was doing it prior to me doing it, and Dave came up to me when I attended one of the city council meetings and said, Louis, you should figure out what your friend Bill's doing, so someday you can do that. I thought, Dave, he ain't going anywhere, and it wasn't a short time later that Bill got married and moved out of the city. So, I was saddened to hear that Dave had passed away, but I know he's had a lot of health conditions his last few years, but he was very instrumental in obtaining the city and making sure that the city ran as smooth as it does today. I think the city is still run well with his, with the result of his work early on in the career of developing the city, and I think he did a great job of managing the city, so, thank you.
Thanks, Louis, and again, Dave was city manager from nineteen seventy-seven to two thousand and eight, just think of all the plats that came into place during that period of time, I think that's when they had, for a city manager, very strong council, I think they had a recall of council in that period, I mean, there were a lot of things that he covered, plus there was also the separation from the township, and he reinstated the fire department, but a lot of things he set up, including this building, are still in play today, so he left a big mark in Bel Brook. Does anyone else from the public care to speak tonight? Seeing, does any member of council be in the business to come before us?
I'm here.
Thanks for the camera work, we appreciate it. Chief, thanks for the report, I now declare this meeting adjourned.